I'm going to call to order the town council meeting of August 1st, 2017 here at the Harvey Room. And if I could ask you all to remain standing for a second. We've got some losses of some very wonderful folks here in town. And two were police officers, and I'd like to ask the chief just to speak on behalf of the two officers that we've lost.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly Charles Herbert and Larry Hughes. We buried them in the same week, a week back. One had 28 years of service with the Winter Police Department, the other one had 25. Mr. Herbert retired shortly before I came on in 1994. And Mr. Hughes retired with us at the Hartville in 1998. Both were outstanding members of the Winter Police Department, dedicated to their service of town, and helped many families, and their loss will be missed.
And also for Nancy Williams. Nancy was the director of the Senior Center for many, many years. We lost her much too young in age. A wonderful, vibrant person who gave her heart and soul to the seniors and to the whole community. Anytime she came into a room, you knew you had no choice but to smile and to listen to her, and she was uplifting to everyone. So we'd like to take a moment of silence for Nancy, for Mr. Officer Hughes and Officer Herbert. Thank you. Can we have the clerk have the roll call first?
Councilor Ringman?
Here.
Councilor Calla?
Present.
Councilor Kristopop?
Here.
Councilor Terry?
Here.
Councilor Boyajin?
Here.
Councilor Barone?
Present.
Councilor Delvento?
Yep.
Vice President Boncorri? President Sampin? Thank you.
We'd like a motion to accept the minutes of July 11, 2017 as circulated.
Motion.
Motion's been made, seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Linda Beck.
Hi, I'm Linda Beck here from Precinct 6. I'm here on behalf of CASA. I am a new vice president of CASA, and we're all here to support what you're going to be discussing later regarding the recovery coaches. Personally, I have a quick note. I've been involved with sums of use for over 10 years with my own family. And back then, I didn't have the support like we have today in Winthrop with the coaches. I believe that if these kids, and adults, I should say, I call them kids because they're so much younger than me, were there when my daughter was going through her stage of addiction, and others, we wouldn't have so many up in the cemetery right now. I've worked personally with Danielle and Chip as a family support group. Many families have come to me in regards to how can I help my child, my husband, my wife, my spouse, find treatment, or I need family group support. With Danielle and Chip, I've been able to help the families, but they've been actually able to help the families as well as the one who's struggling with addiction. Very well-known people in town. We all know each other. We all know who's hurt and who's not. Without these two, many of these kids and adults would not be sober today. And I just wanted to say thank you for them, and I hope we get to keep this program going because without them, the cemetery's going to get ugly. I just want to say thank you. And we have some paperwork, just a quick thing coming up. The town of Winthrop, last year we did a Fed Up Rally. Kathleen and I sponsored through CASA, and we're doing it again this year on August 31st, Thursday. This is for remembrance and hope, but this is now called "The Town of Winthrop Has Stepped Out", which we have done a lot this year. So we hope you'll join us again on August 31st, Thursday at the town hall. We'll have many guest speakers, and we're hoping as we're here, one of you will show up in McKenna to come as well. We have more hope from people who are in recovery. We've had those who've lost a loved one. We also have the young kids coming back to sing again. And we will have a vigil, and Chip and Danielle will be there to offer support as well. So on behalf of CASA, we hope you come and continue our progress with the police. It's been fantastic through this whole time, and he deserves so much credit. Starco for saving the lives. And just keep moving forward and let Winthrop be a better place. So thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work in CASA. Thank you.
Councilor President, could you just all stand up so everyone can see them?
Yeah, if you don't mind everybody who's involved with the CASA program, coaches, and if you don't mind standing up.
I want to personally thank you on behalf of the council for the work that you do. The town really needs all of you, and thank you for being there for us.
Thank you. I'm just putting, I'm going to take things out of order. I'm going to ask that we suspend the council rules in just a second for a manager's report. But in the meanwhile, I'd like to have Councilor Vice President Boncorri here. Why don't we go to correspondence? Unless there's any other public comment, I should ask. Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll go to correspondence. My email has been out for one. I haven't received any, so I'm not sure of the council. This has been an ongoing issue, but we will get it taken care of. Any one of the council have any correspondence they'd like to share? Councilor Barone?
I did receive correspondence from a resident on Bowden Street concerning a no parking sign that she'd like to have placed up, and later on, I'll ask you to refer it out to T-SOC.
Anything else from any one of the council?
I just have one more thing. I did get an email actually today. And again, it was requesting that Michael Salucci's memorial will still be kept nice-looking. It's overgrown, it's neglected, and his father went by the other day. He was so upset to see a memorial like that not being taken care of. Okay, so if you could maybe send somebody over there. Okay, thank you.
We're going to have, if I may speak on that subject, we're going to have to consider perhaps a new location for that memorial.
And I did tell his father that.
And the memorials committee would have to be engaged to consider that request.
Prior to superintendent Maserle leaving, he did make the recommendation that maybe we might be able to move it to high school, middle school. So maybe we take that up at the new superintendent and have that memorial relocated.
Who's the chair of the memorial?
Oh.
Right, okay. That's right, I'm sorry, that's right, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, council?
No.
If nothing else, we'll move on to committee reports. DPW, DCR, dog park location review.
Okay. I'll take that report, Mr. President. Tuesday, the 25th of July at 7:00 PM at the DeLeo Senior Center. The DPW had a meeting with DCR concerning the proposed off-leash dog recreation area. President, or myself, Councilor Delvento, Councilor Boyajin, Councilor Angman was present, so was Councilor Calla. Joe Domalowicz was also there from the town manager's office. And from the DCR, Commissioner Roy was there, and Patrice Kish. We went over the process of choosing the location of the park, and we heard from concerns and comments from the public. It was pretty much supported by the majority of people there. And DCR was present to hear everyone's concern and suggested that their comment period is not over, and they can always email for further comment. The next step of this process would be to get a permit from DEP, and then finally licensure from DCR. And the meeting was over by 8:30 PM.
Thank you, council. Next is E. Millerfield Committee, Councilor Terry.
Thank you. Millerfield Committee met last night. There was a lot going on, I guess. The Ingleside Park part of the project is pretty much done. We're waiting on security, and I noticed today, I just went down there on the way to this meeting, and there were probably 12 people in there playing soccer. And, you know, we've had some issues already with the tennis nets, and we strongly encourage the town to, we do have a recommendation for security, a key system which we feel is going to be sufficient to keep the courts in the shape that we left, that we started with. And we hope that the town acts on that right away. We have a price, I think, of $25,000 that would be paid for out of the Millerfield funds. The project is on budget, so it's not an issue. But we really hope that that's taken care of right away. There's going to be a lot going on down at the football field. Over the next two to three weeks, they'll be working on the field lights, the pads for the field lights, the pads for the home bleachers, the slab for the away bleachers. The big thing that's going on is this Norlite, which is the lightweight fill that's hopefully going to help all in terms of drainage and everything else. And there's 200 truckloads of Norlite coming in, and right now, we're just under halfway with about 92 truckloads. So hopefully in the next two to three weeks, that will all be done. We have about three weeks until the Norlite is done. We're hoping that the track is installed by the second week in September. Not the actual surface of the track, but the asphalt base of the track. Once that's in, it's about a 30-day cure for that before we put the substance down, the surface down. In that time, you'll start to see the carpet, the field itself, being laid. Light should be in by early September, and then the surface of the track late October. And everything else is going well. We also talked and would like to hear back from the towns and the schools as far as maintenance of the schools in the future. Who's going to be responsible and how that's going to work out? We don't want to wait until the field's built to decide that. We're hoping to get all the maintenance issues out before. And that's it. We will be meeting at the end of August again.
Any questions from the council? If not, we'll move. Can we get, I'm just going to hold a second. Let's see if Councilor Vice President comes in. School department update. I was not able to make the school committee meeting, but I do see that we have a member of the school committee here. Ron Beck, could you give us an update on the last school?
Sure. We met on July 24th at the lyceum room at 6 o'clock. It was fairly brief meeting because it's summer. We did hear a report from the superintendent, I mean superintendent. She has been meeting with department heads and principals of each school, along with some of the teachers, and as well as town department heads to make sure that she's up to speed on exactly what's going on. She is constantly looking at the budget that we approved, and that's an ongoing work in progress. It was a very brief meeting. We did also hear that the town was ready to execute the IRFP transportation. We're trying to take a look at the bus situation, whether it's better for us to outsource transportation in the district or keep it in-house. That's basically it.
Thank you, Ron. Now, we don't have to take any, yes?
I can follow up on a number of other items under my report.
Okay, would you mind?
Just to fill in the blanks.
Okay, and then we'll start.
Sure.
Oh, here's the council vice president. Perfect timing. Thank you. Good timing.
They just started?
No, they just started. Okay. Tom Ingers' report?
Yes. Well, the first matter up for discussion is a presentation. As I wrote to you folks a couple of weeks ago, what has been some very good news. Many of you were there on the 21st with the governor and Jay Ash and the speaker and Senator Boncorri, all celebrating the award of $2.38 million to the community for revitalization of Winthrop Center. So that's been a culmination, as you know, of a long time in planning and effort on your behalf and as well as the town department heads to put together a plan that was accepted by the Commonwealth to move forward with the revitalization of the center. It's a remarkable undertaking, to say the least, because this now requires us to really come forward with an execution plan. And we'll be held to very strict time standards from the Commonwealth with regard to that funding. And it requires us to have a comprehensive analysis that we plan to present to you tonight. That covers both a little bit of the history of the project, a little bit of what still needs to be done, what our timeframe and schedule will be, a review of the existing plan as they are at 90% completion. We have our, both our engineer, Art Lumentis from Woodard and Curran, to speak specific to the plans as they are today, and as well as from Cofflin engineers, our peer review of that plan as you requested us conduct a peer review. So we have those folks here tonight to give their input as far as the plans and the advice we can learn from them. And then, subject to that conversation, we plan to go forward with a presentation to you about timeline, budget, as well as a number of motions for you to consider to move some things forward, to refer out the decision of doing a pilot traffic and mobility analysis under a very quick timeframe that we'd ask to be referred to the DPW Subcommittee for recommendation and then acted upon on August 15th at your next council meeting. We also have before you a half a dozen funding motions. Some of them with regard to existing fundings that we've secured, also proposed funding that, subject to your authorization, we would move forward on as this project progresses, and that we apply for additional funding if we can seek it. And if we are successful, we will not need the extent of the bonding request that is in your packet. So it's really a compilation of a multitude of layers of review and consideration that the council has to give now to this project because we are now charged with moving forward. And that's exciting. It's exciting for the town. It's exciting for your departments. It's disruptive, to say the least. But it's a two-year timeframe that has to begin post-haste, and what we need from you is decisions. So it's decision time. And I'm excited, anxious, and I'm sure a lot of other folks are excited and anxious at the same time of what this tells for the community. But with that, I'd like to just ask my team to make a quick, brief presentation. And I will start with history. And then, before we do that, I want to ask our engineer to tell us about the status of the plan, the securing of Cofflin engineers to review, and ask the peer review engineer to give a brief summary of their findings. So before we get into the project, let's do that. Art, if you mind giving us an overview for everyone of where we are with the status of the engineered plan?
Sure. So we've developed the plans to about 90%. They include upgrading drainage water sewer structures in the town center up through, I think that includes Woodside Avenue, I'm sorry, Somerset Ave, Bartlett Road, Adam Street, Williams Street, Cottage Park Ave, basically between Pauline Street and Putnam Street. There's some, we've developed streetscaping plans for pavement improvements, sidewalk improvements, converting Hagman Road to a pedestrian way, and doing some of the parking lot improvements at the parking lot next to the bank, and also some sidewalk improvements on Putnam Street. That's about, at the 90% stage, we've gone up to Cofflin Environmental for peer review. They've gone through it. They've given us their comments. We're reviewing those and trying to get those updated, finalized. Our goal is to get that done early September, have one final review, and get it out the bid so we can have a bid period in October and an award in November.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask Dan Cofflin to give brief comment on the peer review of those plans.
First of all. Good evening, everyone. We reviewed the plans actually twice already. At the 15, 60% stage, we gave some broad-based comments on the plan sets. Since that time, we now have the 90% review. That included the technical specifications as well as some of the front-end documents. So we have had a chance to go through the specifications, the contract documents, as well as the plans. And that includes, obviously, the plans, the profiles, and the detail sheets. We gave a broad variety of comments. Our task was basically just concentrating on the utilities, not the streetscape. Although we did give them a couple of comments relative to some of the streetscape parking and some of the orientations. But for the most part, our utility review was the key focus. We went through the water. We offered up some general reconfiguration of the water, some general comments to increase some of the water sewer separation in accordance with DEP policies, some additional hydrant placements. And there were also some general comments regarding conflict resolution between the utilities. There's a lot of utilities there. There's two gas lines on a couple of streets. So there's a lot of work currently underway, ongoing with the gas utilities that still need to be resolved and worked out. But generally, we also looked at the drainage. We looked at hydraulic outlets. Made some general recommendations for resizing, decreasing the burial depths. We were not only doing the peer review, we were also doing kind of a value engineering to try to reduce the overall costs as well.
We appreciate that.
I'm sure. It's a big project. In terms of the sewer, not much as far as the sewer. For the most part, some raising and lowering of the elevations of the sewer in order to allow services and to get rid of some of the conflicts between the utilities. Were you doing all three utilities at the same time? There's always bound to be some conflicts. Nothing we found in the plan sets or the design sets was really significant. We did make some other recommendations for burial depths of pipes and general type of material, you know, to increase the overall structural stability of the piping systems because some had shallow burial relative to the roadway. But generally, all those were pretty much in line with what you'd normally find in the progress of the plans. At this point in time, we gave all our comments to Woodard and Curran. They're evaluating some of them to see if they will adopt them. They may be reassessing some of the conflicts that we identified for them. I anticipate that we'll probably have one last plan review set to see how those comments were addressed. We should be in pretty good shape.
Great. Any questions from the council? Councilor Ringman?
I have two questions. In the event that the redevelopment project at the old middle school site goes forward, are we addressing the length of Pauline Street to accommodate that with this project?
No.
Or making sure that we can add on easily enough?
That would be the answer for now. We clearly know where this project piece begins and ends. That Pauline Street piece will come as a third phase, if you know. But we would prep for it, assuming, because we know that that has to be considered. But it's more of an out-year project than it is included in this first two-phase proposal.
Okay, so in the event that we need bigger water sewer lines, better utilities on Pauline Street, will be able to plug in easily enough?
Yes.
Okay.
It's set up that way.
Okay, okay. And my other question that came up a while ago at some of the stakeholder meetings we have was that the connection between the water main or the sewer main and the individual buildings were not graded well when they were initially installed. Is there a way to have that corrected or to allow the property owners to correct that as part of the project, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, generally, the design for the new sewer has lowered the sewer elevation, not raised it. So that would combine additional grade or pitch for the service ladders. And I believe that was one of the design points Woodard and Curran had pointed out. They're trying to increase the grade of those services in order to maintain and function better.
Okay, because it sounds like that's been a problem with the property owners?
Yes.
And if that will automatically correct then? Or is there something that property owners will also have to do?
Yeah, I mean, they extend those back to the properties essentially, or the property lines. There may be additional work in the area of the buildings themselves that may need to be corrected. But primarily, the work within the streetscape would be complete and that would still to allow that.
The service ladders are being carried over to the back of sidewalk from that point on the home.
Which is pretty typical in any residential or commercial project.
But this will?
Right up to the property line.
Yep.
And then it would be the responsibility of the developers or the businesses or the owners to take it from there. That's what I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, as Dan said, the sewer is being lowered in areas where we see issues to try to correct those issues.
Which should help quite a bit, I think, yeah. Thank you. Councilor Ringman, anyone else?
I would add that the landscape piece, and thank you for your input on those issues. We are procuring the services of a landscape architect to do that proterminous with the review that's being going on now. So there will be more opportunity for input and discussion among council and, you know, business owners and residents in that process. So that will be going on as we get underway with the underground process.
Mr. President? Councilor Delvento?
And I'm not sure, but I guess it probably would, with Curran doing it. I doubt 75% to the CTD, but are we going to have one? Or do you guys have any type of estimate you're doing for time?
For construction aspect?
Yeah, construction's on duration.
We're in the process of trying to go through some of the upgrades right now. We have a preliminary estimate established. Was it?
Eight, 45.
Construction, construction including administration and please details are estimated right now at 8.45?
I was thinking more of a scheduling model.
I think, is that considered a new presentation?
We're going to go through the.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the presentation.
We have the whole presentation.
Councilor Delvento? Any other question? If it's something we're going to be discussing, just let us know.
We're going to go right into that now.
All right, why don't we go into that, and then we can have another question, you know, after, segment after this. Okay?
Okay.
I think a lot of those questions will be answered for us.
So my job is to go through a little of the history of what we've got to see. So for all of you here at that home.
Maybe you can back me a little bit, please?
Yeah, maybe I should. I don't want to be speaking if I act as a camera. So, you know, first of all, I just want to thank my staff, Joe Domalowicz, Steve Calla, and Terry Delahandie for working over the past few days to put together, I think, a very comprehensive look at the variety of challenges and issues that we now have to make decisions on as a community through the council. And they've done a remarkable job, and I think you'll be well informed tonight about the variety of intricacies involved in the project. As you know, the town undertook an economic development strategy planning process with McCormick Institute at UMass Boston regarding the Center Business District back in 2014. You, the council, adopted new zoning as a consequence of that to encourage residential development above the existing footprint of residential space, knowing that a mixed-use concept does serve to invite greater economic development opportunities for the center. And that has been consistently found in a number of other communities. So this is a strategy that's been tried and tested and proved very successful. But that alone was not the cure for the center. We needed to explore how we would develop and how that enmasing of redevelopment would impact existing infrastructure as well as, you know, the traffic mobility questions and a number of other issues. And so we invited additional economic development strategic planning of the center to understand what was at risk and what was at stake. And those reports you've all had and read. They are available, by the way, on our website. In addition, we hired an urban design firm, Forman Place, to create a visual rendering of what might happen as a conceptual design to help us get our heads and arms around what we were really trying to achieve. Nothing was, you know, a final plan in that process. It was more or less giving us context in which to understand what we needed to get to that kind of end game for the center. And they did that process, and we paid them, and that was very helpful. But then we understood through applying for an urban agenda grant and hiring MACC as well, that much more needed to be done. In fact, we needed to have a master plan of the area in order to secure the kind of funding that we were successful in securing last Friday. So we undertook an economic development master plan at the center, inviting a number of new voices and participants into the process and really allowing a very collaborative engagement with the town. And that master plan was submitted to the council in March. And you all reviewed that and adopted that plan. That offers a variety of options for the council to consider. As a consequence of that, this plan was developed here, which brings out many of the features proposed in that master plan, which calls for increase in green space, for example, a repair and replacement of a number example, a repair and replacement of a number of the streetscape elements to the center. It calls for quite a significant disruption. As a consequence of that, we, we recognize, well, if we're going to spend that kind of effort in the center, we certainly need to fix what's in the ground and to, and to replace what's there, because we don't want to have to go back and rip up what we've just put in. So then we engaged our engineers, Wood and Curran, to tell us where we were with respect to infrastructure. And they came back with the obvious reports on needing to improve both sewer, water, and electrical, gas, and other utilities. We went about looking at each one of those elements and recognized that some things need to come first before others. And you've lived through the recent National Grid gas line replacement project, which was the first in, in a multitude of efforts that needs, need to take place to ensure that we then have a reason to come in and do the surface plan that was originally proposed. We went forward with a MassWorks infrastructure program grant in the amount of 2.38 million. We have been awarded that grant. The town council, on the, on the basis of that, we will be issuing a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and then, you know, abiding by strict guidelines as a, as a result. The project timeline, I'd ask Chief Delahanty, who's put a lot of effort of recent weeks in helping think through how this all sort of totem holds in terms of both the work that has to be done in ground as well as the surface issues that we are running out having to further study and to consider. So Chief, would you?
I'm going to, I'm going to take the timeline.
You are? Okay. Steve Calla's going to take this one.
Okay.
Just as Steve's making his way, we just want to caution, what the timeline does, it doesn't include what Jim just went through as the pre-planning stages, but it certainly includes the National Grid deployment and the strategies that we sat with National Grid and planned for. And I'll let Steve take it.
Exactly, exactly. So this timeline, we wanted to do is we wanted to bring you through the, the meeting preparations with National Grid, which continue today and, and kind of bring you right through the end of the project as to what we recommend and what we feel necessary that, that these decisions be made at a time we manage for this, for this completion date as we set forth. So, so again, triggered by this, this CBD master plan process and upon application of the, the MassWorks grant, the town utilized NWOA funding to begin our engineering and design, going off the direction of the master plan as that progressed. So in the September of 2016, we, after our, after design had, had, had began, we sat down, we invited National Grid to come in and speak to us, as it was quickly recognized that there was all of infrastructure in the Center Business District in regards to gas, gas mains. After a few back and forth meetings, we were able to get them to commit to moving us up about at least seven years on their capital plan to go ahead and go into the center area for the scope of our project and replace any existing cast iron veins to plastic. They're currently still in that process, they're nearing completion, they hope to be done by the end of August, changing over all their services. So that's underway and, and going well. In March of 2017, we submitted to the council our initial rendering of, of the hardscape and at the same time gave you a status of our utility upgrades. It was at that time that, you know, that, again, we urged that, that we look at that, at that design and, and, you know, we wanted feedback and we urged feedback so that we could proceed, and design did proceed. In April of 2017, the National Grid work began down the center, and we also brought in National Grid Electric and discussed putting some overhead wiring at the leg of Woodside Ave near the current CBS below ground. That was, you know, an aesthetic decision that we're going to spend all this money down this, this area, we wanted to enter that, that area and not be looking at a spider web of overhead wiring and leaning telephone poles and that sort of stuff. So I will get into the, the National Grid Electric status a little bit later in the presentation, but they did agree that it was, it was feasible and at a cost, and that, you know, with the commitment by the town that they would proceed with engineering and they could get it done within the timeframe of our project. Also in March 2017, we started, we, we held our first public, a public meeting at the EB Newton School, basically at that time to discuss the upcoming National Grid gas work. And we presented at that time, the, the rendering, it was already presented to council for the public to look at, to ask questions, and, and we got a feel-good turnout at that meeting, and, and business owners were able to ask the questions of the upcoming gas, gas work, and, and we, we set parameters of the communications during the, during the gas work, how we would communicate, how the work was going to proceed, and, and I feel that it was some adjustments, as, you know, as with all projects, that build of communications has been, you know, National Grid gas has held up there in the bargain, and they gave us a weekly status report for the upcoming week, and I don't know about the council, but, but I, I feel that it's been, it's been very helpful, and I feel that, that they've done a good job.
We, we posted that weekly on our blog and, and on the website as well, it's utilized the services of the chamber, thank you, to communicate to any particular stakeholders who had particular concerns, they knew how to reach out, and we did pay some business to some that had some concerns and addressed them as we went along. But as you know, nothing's perfect like that, and then we do learn as we go, and we make adjustments as we go.
So throughout this whole process up to this point, the design and engineering continued, and, you know, with feedback from, from the hearing at the EB Newton School, from, from the, the Center Business District owners, business owners in, in residence that came to those meetings, we made some slight modifications and, and we shared those, that, that feedback with, with Wood and Curran, and we had slight modifications to the rendering. That said, all along, from the beginning, we had Haggan Road being, being closed to vehicular traffic and pedestrian waves, so that, and that remains in the, in the design today. So in just recent, June 21st, 2017, we, we received that, that great news that we got the 2.38 million dollars from the state for MassWorks grant for our shovel-ready project, which shovel-ready being a key word, you know, the state committed a lot, a lot of funds to us for a project that we are currently in, is shovel-ready. And we feel that it certainly, certainly is, we hope that everybody feels the same way. August, this next month, we're hoping that the council will endorse a traffic pilot study, which will basically test out the road closures, the reversals in direction that we're proposing. So Haggan Road being, being closed entirely to vehicular traffic, we're proposing to allow a left-hand turn coming down Woodside.
Since you jumped in, let's do it.
Can we go down slightly?
Can we go? Yeah. Let's talk about this, and let's let Chief Delahanty just talk about the, the proposal and the timeframe that we need to.
Sure. The key, the timeframe that we're looking for is when National Grid gets off the street and before we deploy construction vehicles to the street. We thought, we figured that that is a fair and accurate timeframe, that there's no other construction going on, the track, traffic flow will be observed in real life conditions after completion. So the timeframe is chosen on those bases.
So Chief, specifically, what are the days when, which you would propose implementing this?
We would like to get this, you know, September 1st, or November 1st would be the ideal time. Where no construction is on, in the center.
Is one condition, as you're aware of the fact that Dell, what's the company?
Dellwork, we met with today.
Dellwork, yes.
And they have a demolition application in that'll probably be approved. They will be working to tear down onsite, no trucks on the street, they'll be in their own work zone, the demolition of the old CVS Dollar Store building. They'll demolish it, they've figured it's going to take them about thirty days. They're looking to get started August 31st and being done by September 31st, and then going through their planning process and approval process of what they're going to build and to start the building in the spring. So that will still be going on, it's not going to be in the center that would affect any of the traffic flows or the closures. So the closures is, Director Calla had just mentioned, the biggest one is Haggan Road, and we want to shift the cars down Jefferson towards Potnum, so cars could come down Woodside and take a right, cars could still come around the Rotary and, and followed by Cafe Delight and go right or left onto Potnum. Realizing that what we're trying to do is a circular flow motion around the exterior of the center, so we can concentrate on pedestrian paths and walkways and green spaces inside where it can be more utilized by families eating dinner or biking down there and tying up their bikes and having dinner in a comfortable spot. We do feel that Adam Street does have to be reversed. This is something that was at the TSAT committee already for reversal, and, and there was about twelve neighbors that showed up and, and had some objection to the reversal. But our plan here suggests that we allow to take a left-hand turn at the end of Woodside to go up Potnum. So these people wouldn't have to go all the way through Potnum down Woodside to get to Pleasant Street. This is, this is certainly, I think, a good compromise, and it also keeps the circular flow motion going around in, in a circular manner.
So Chief, on that point, we respect, you know, the, the Adam Street residents, you know, like to exit quickly off onto Pleasant Street. But what we're suggesting is, is something looking at the greater good of the center as a whole. Because if we're going to go forward with a plan that's at all similar to what's been analyzed for the center, it requires us to consider increasing green space and doing these streetscape elements, but yet not doing it at the expense of the entire town trying to navigate the center. And so we think that having two ways off of, of Woodside, being able to go left and right enables people to maintain a circular influence around the center and, and not lose that opportunity for people to circumnavigate easily. So while it comes at the cost of Adam Street residents having to reverse that flow, we think it's a proposal in the best interest of the town as a whole.
Just to address some of the concerns, the parking, on a one-way, you can park left wheels to the curb, so we would not lose any parking by reversing the one-way, so they'd still have to be able to park on the same side of the street they're parking with left wheels to the curb instead of right wheels to the curb. Because the one-way will be going in the opposite direction. I think it's very important also to point out by allowing this, it takes what, it takes some pressure off of Potnum Street, too. So we divert and not download to make it more circular flow and constant flow and no congestion.
Does that affect any spaces at the corner of Woodside?
By rule of fact, two, two parking spots at the corner there. Certainly, we looked at that. Myself and Director Calla also looked at Citizens Bank, their drive-through was one of the issues that I was concerned with, especially when you do a pilot, you don't want to make business owners do any expense at all. Originally, we had the, the drive-through in the plan coming off of Potnum, you drive through, but their window would be on the wrong side. So we reversed the circular motion. Now you come through the parking lot and you'll be able to circular right into their drive-through and then out Potnum, so there'll be no expenses there causing us to flow the same as it's currently flowing now, today. So there'll be no impact and no expenses for Citizens Bank. Their drive-through will still work during this pilot project and, and also at the completion of this project. Action ambulance will, will maintain.
Just speak on that for one second, of Citizens Bank. So that's really the only part of this pilot program that does require a little bit of construction. We do have to create an apron to be able to come in from Citizens Bank, from the Citizens Bank, adjacent to Citizens Bank will be able to come in from that lot. So there's, there's a little bit of, there's a curve cut that would be required for this pilot and the removal of a, of a tree, so that, that, that flow could be, could be tested. Other than that, all these road closures would be done with cement jersey barriers. But I do, I did, you know, once we commit to this traffic plan, there is probably, you know, just that minor work to, to get that, that, that apron installed for Citizens Bank.
What's this stat data? Hold on, hold on, please. Let, let's let them finish up and then we can.
The other impact was that, was the ambulance, ambulance company, Cataldo, that uses that rail lot on Hagman, and would maintain a common driveway, so they'd have enough space to get down to their lot and into the lot, so it would shrink down the, the amount of green space, but not by much, it is a common driveway size and not a street size.
Showing in front right here. So that, that will remain, if, if Haggan Road, you know, stays in the plan and is being closed, there will be a common drive, there'll be no parking allowed on that, it would just be a shared access point for those, those three structures up to action ambulance.
That's where the body shop is, so and so. Continue, I'm sorry.
So I think that, that's, I believe, you won't be able, they'll be, you know, doing on that, a one-way coming up Jefferson, and quite frankly, it probably should have been a one-way many years ago, so we're just making some corrections there. It's, it's tight there, especially with trucks. So a loading zone and an unloading zone, we'll certainly be looking at, creating a loading zone for trucks so they're not tying up the entire center, that we have an, an area to put them and to load and unload. So we're still working on, on that portion of our hardscape as well as conversations between me and the director. Chief Davis.
Let's, let's continue. That's, that's a pilot project now that we need to add a motion of the council to revert, to give a little sublimation consideration and revert that, or action on August 15th, so that we can then go ahead and deploy through the prep work and, and be underway in the next two weeks to conduct this.
And we'll be bringing that motion forward after the presentations, okay?
Again, and, you know, so once that decision comes in, we do have probably about a week's worth of time to get barriers in place, to modify any of this, to citizens bank, you know, a little bit of prep work, you know, to really deploy on traffic. So again, to, to kind of just reiterate the urgency of, of these decisions, we figure we've got thirty days of, of design work to, to get to completion. So we're hoping to have full design, you know, based on findings from the traffic study by the end of September. We would need thirty days to create a bid set, which would bring us into October, and, and then thirty days to actually advertise, have a bid opening and, and get this contract awarded. And it would be the hope that if we awarded it in November, if the weather cooperated, that we could potentially start some drain or sewer work. And then go through the winter and have the, the full utility work being, you know, the water work, deployment of the temporary water mains in the spring of 2018. And again, it's an aggressive schedule, but, you know, funding kind of dictates it as well as, you know, trying to mitigate the impact on the businesses down in the center, hoping to have all utility work done by the end of October 2018. Go through another winter and start the street and sidewalk work in the, in the spring of, of 2019 with the street and sidewalk work, ending hopefully in August, potentially September of 2019, with landscape work kind of starting throughout that final phases of the sidewalk and street work for a project closeout of fall of 2019. It is our intent, our hope, my hope, to be able to host the, the Halloween event, the center event that we're all familiar with in the fall of 2019 in a, in a new center. So we're striving for that.
So we'll continue on to discuss how we're going to pay for this. And Steve and Terry jump in if you need to. I have a suite of motions that we presented tonight to the council for referral out to the finance committee. All of you have received. All of you have received. Again, as was mentioned, in total, we're looking at a project of roughly eight point five million dollars in cost with the add-on consideration of five hundred thousand dollars for the burying of the electrical lines of National Grid on Woodside entrance going in. So they won't do it for their cost, they'll do it for our cost. But if you go down and take a look at those horrible, that site, I think you would agree that if we're gonna really make this project sing, I think we need to consider that as a budget. As a five hundred thousand add-on as well. So with that, we have secured two point three eight. We are also in agreement with the MWRA. And I have to thank Chief Planning for expediting a decision from MWRA to allow us to utilize a full amount of award that for sewer SRF funding that we are able to obtain as well as water main funding as well from the MWRA. And that will come into play here to enable us to go with zero interest loans through the MWRA. Ten-year loans for two million dollars for waterworks. We're gonna apply two hundred thousand in Chapter ninety funds to the project which will cover some street surface repave and sidewalk issues. Again, five hundred thousand in sewer funds. And then in addition, what we're looking for is pursuing Complete Streets Grant because we are applied for that program.
So our secured funds right now are just over five million dollars. And with the project cost of eight point five, we have that difference or the delta of above three and a half million dollars. And the manager will speak to the sources that we will be pursuing to try to close that gap.
So to do that, we want to look at all options first. So I do have in front of the council a request for bonding authorization, but not appropriation. As we did with the schools, for example. We tell you what the total project cost is. We also say that we will not spend that total cost in general obligation bonds if we don't have to, if we are successful in securing additional funds. So we're looking at those other sources. Complete Streets, state revolving funds for clean water and drinking water that may be available. We'll apply a grant for that. Postal Zone has some remediation programs that we're gonna take a look at as well. And the community development block grant applications open up in March of eighteen. So all of those are potential areas of funding. And we will pursue those, you know, as an effort to bring down the total indebtedness that the town would be requiring to have to go out and issue. But because we have to secure contracts with the contracts, we have to have essentially good funds available, okay? To do that. And so that's why I have to bring forward to the council tonight, George, a referral to the finance committee, a full authorization of the delta of funding that still needs to be secured to complete the entirety of the project. So I have in front of the council the MWRA borrowings for the authorization to utilize those funds as well as a total sum of three point nine two oh million that will be proposed for engineering design, replacement of water main, street sidewalk improvements and service connections to the western center project. But again, we will offset any of that with additional funds that we may be successful in obtaining through other grants in the future. But we do have to have that authorization on the books in order to execute a contract with a contractor. So that basically gives us, you know, the totality of costs and how we have proposed to pay for the project. I thank, you know, our engineers and Steve and everyone who's really sharpening their pencils and coming up with now, you know, almost, you have two-thirds of it secured as well as, you know, a very solid understanding of what the cost of construction estimates would be. Again, it's still, you know, fine tuning that's going on. I know our engineers are working collaboratively now to understand the details and to put out a final number. But we think fairly confidently this is the range within which this project will fall. Then moving on in our presentation, let's talk about operations and how we get the project done and in what order the project is done, which I think is very concerning to everyone, particularly business owners in the center. Steve, could you talk about that, please?
Yes, so I basically wanted first just to talk about our goal, but one big difference from the gas project that everybody's kind of experienced now, lived through, and plus to this project, this upcoming project, is that there is no, there's no work proposed on Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street impacted the gas work daily. The only work that will occur on Pleasant Street is as the Finger Streets come up with the new utilities, just the tie-ins, which are a lot smaller window of impact. Usually they can tie in a water main to an existing main with a tap and sleeve in about four hours if everything goes well. Typically, they'll dig it the day before, they'll plate it, open the plate the following day, do their tying and close it up. So what happened to deal with Pleasant Street closures is...
So it would be great news.
Certainly good news for the chief and myself. So the goal, obviously, and truthfully, is to minimize disruptions and impacts to the businesses and the residents of the center. That being said, we cannot downplay the size of this project. There's three utilities being replaced. There is, the depth of these utilities is much deeper than what we just lived through with gas main. But we will certainly do our best through communication and a partnership with the contractor to ensure to the best of our ability that we mitigate and lessen the impacts as best we can. That said, it's also our goal not to increase the cost of this project. Eight point five million dollars, we understand is a project that probably won't happen again in a lot of our lifetimes. But it's a big project and the number's big and we certainly don't want to go above. So although we want to mitigate and try to be, have a construction strategy that's really defined, you know, as defined as we can, we don't want to out-cost ourselves. The more restraints you put on a contractor, the higher the price goes. So we're gonna work with that, we're gonna work with William Curran and we'll work with Coughlin and try to come up with a construction strategy that fits our needs, but also fits our price tag.
But, you know, as again, we are continuing to be open-minded to the concerns that businesses have. We learn a lot as we go along in this process and we'll keep learning. And if there are particular issues or concerns that need to be addressed, we'll include those in as we go along. You know, we understand that loading zones are a critical issue in the center. We understand that, you know, times of day and night are critical issues for certain businesses. All of those things and access, you know, making sure that there's adequate access to keep the businesses open. That is our goal. We don't want to see any business go out of business because of this project. That said, as Steve mentioned, this is going to be a big disruption. And so it's gonna be hard for businesses to, you know, handle and manage, you know, the day-to-day activities here. I think we ought to consider as, you know, having a continuing dialogue with the citizens through the chamber and businesses through the chamber and to, you know, continue to do as best we can with the communication of the project, having weekly updates as we've now, you know, adopted as a practice. And also whatever, a hotline for concerns where businesses can say, you know, people just don't get it, blah, 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 we need this done or take a look at that. And then we, you know, can maintain some level of agility as we go along. We will have to have a project engineer onsite every day. We will also no doubt have to have two police officers on the project every day. So those additional costs have been added into the project estimate. But it means that, you know, we will have a face on this project every day for someone to, you know, to understand what the daily conditions are going on. And then we do our level best, given the restraints and concerns as mentioned, to try to do the best we can, but to get the project done.
Okay, so how do we proceed once the work is underway? What will you see? In the spring of 2018, you'll see a full deployment of water main, temporary water main. So the whole project limits will be on temporary, on temporary water main. The scope of the project is, as we discussed and I'll discuss again, is Woodside Avenue from Pauline Street all the way to Pleasant, including French Square. Botlet Road from Woodside to Potnum. Somerset from Pleasant Street to Woodside. Carnage Park Road from Pleasant Street down to Somerset.
Steve?
Yep.
Is Botlet not from Pleasant to the street?
Botlet is from Pleasant. Did I say that?
The second one down.
Botlet is from Pleasant Street, from Pleasant Street down to Woodside. That was just a, that's a typo. I'm sorry, yep. Carnage Park Road from Pleasant Street to Somerset. Jefferson Road, Jefferson Street from Woodside to Potnum Street. The entirety of Hagman Road. Adam Street, essentially the entirety, which is Woodside to Williams. And Williams, the entire length. That's where all your utility work will be performed. Street and sidewalk areas that will only be undergoing street and sidewalk renovations will be the municipal lot beside the Citizens Bank parking lot. There will probably be some relocation of catch basins within that lot. But essentially, it's a hardscape restoration. Potnum Street will get new curb-to-curb asphalt, new sidewalk. And Hagman Road parking lot will also be resurfaced. Brings us to the town manager and town manager.
Okay, so this is where we need to go. We have, we are asking for matters of consideration from the council tonight. One, a vote of authorization to proceed with the pilot project. To be referred to the DPW committee and a final vote on that on August fifteenth. We'd ask for that consideration of the motion for that tonight. Secondly, we are moving forward with financing of the balance in Mount Rogers. I proposed a motion to the council, you all have. I'd ask for that to be referred to the finance committee so that we can take a final vote on that on August fifteenth. The hardscape design, which was submitted to the council in March, an engineering authorized by me as a consequence of the award of the state, the final version of the hardscape is attached to what you have. We are asking landscapes, architects to opine on that and to give input. But that's an open process. We certainly will take input from the council, perhaps through the economic development subcommittee to ensure that we're meeting, you know, the design expectations. Because those have got to be settled so that we can finalize the design no later than when? When do we have to have the plan done?
By September.
September what?
Sorry. You need it done for what?
Essentially, we've authorized the hardscape design. We had to continue engineering. The engineering is dictated by the closure of Hagman Road. So in order to keep this thing going and try to meet these deadlines and to be able to spend the state money as they want us to for our shovel-ready project, we authorized William Curran to continue with the complete and design, assuming Hagman Road gets closed. If Hagman Road does not get closed, it will affect utility work. It will set us back and, you know, what that will do to funding is, it creates a lot of uncertainty. So we need to make these decisions. We need to get our pilot program done. We need to get our data. We need a decision as to whether or not our decision to have our, continue with that design is still acceptable to the council. If not, then probably we'll be back in front here trying to figure out funding to make up potentially threatening.
The design will be in the bid package?
The design has to be in the bid.
Ask in the bid package and when is the bid done?
Bid right now would be October.
Well, it will open September and...
The bid would be advertised in October and opened at, towards the end of October.
So you need something early September.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do a pilot plan for August. And we're gonna need to make some decisions for those if you like.
I think that's the important part, is at least get the pilot in place tonight and get that approved so we can get that rolling.
And just, if I could speak on that, we still have a lot of work to do with education, meeting with the business owners, going to Adam Street, dropping leaflets off. We want them to know what we're doing. So the more time you give before September, the more notification and talking we can do.
Want to continue?
No, we'll all shut the questions. Right, so essentially, we're looking for three actions of the council. A vote on the traffic pilot. A vote on the authorization for funding. And a hardscape design approval. The hardscape design approval, of course, we're running work with the landscape architect. We know that there's a process to secure that service ongoing. We have to, it's incumbent upon us to sort of nail down and start that review and to have that come in to enable us to ask the council for a final action on this plan. Because everything underneath it has been decided. And then commitment letter of appropriation to authorize engineering for the National Grid Electric Horizon Comcast to move utilities below ground and an additional authorization of five hundred thousand to move that electric below ground. So those are the four actions we're looking for from the council on the project. Ready for questions?
Ready for questions from the council?
Engineering question, and forgive me for being not very informed on engineering. So if we close Hagman Road down for vehicle traffic, how about the buildings that are on either side of Hagman Road all the way down? Are they still gonna get an upgrade in their utilities?
So there's no water main currently on Hagman Road. Those buildings are served from Woodside. Okay, and the Citizens Bank is served off of Potnum Street. So those utilities will be upgraded as part of the project. Potnum Street's already been upgraded as part of contract two, which happened a few years back. But those buildings that, you know, kind of front both Woodside and Hagman will be upgraded from the Woodside side.
Okay.
Existing utilities that are in Hagman Road right now are just drainage. And those will be upgraded. The water sewer come off of those streets, which will be upgraded as part of those streets.
Okay, and so even though there's not a water main on Hagman, it will still allow for the buildings on Hagman Road to be built up should this property owner want to do that?
That's a fact.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? Counselor, it's here.
So on the test pilot, now you had said earlier that you were looking for this to be referred to.
Well, since we're initiating it tonight, our council will require us to ask for, you have authority to consider a vote tonight to expedite that. I don't want to presume that that's what our actions are, but you could do that.
I would ask, after some more questions, if we can suspend council rules, let's make sure we have all our questions answered. And again, this was, you know, as you go back to the history, you know, this is a project planned that started in 2014. Hundreds of hours of meetings, hundreds of hours of input from business, from public, so on and so forth. So this is not something that's been done with any short-sightedness. And it's important that we act as soon as we can to make sure we have everything in place. Counselor, it's here.
Okay, so back to the pilot program. So my concerns are, and voting on this tonight, my concerns are, so today I looked at three separate times. There were roughly twenty-two to twenty-three cars parked on Hagman and four on the extension in front of Samuels. So obviously, those cars are gonna have to be diverted. So obviously, those cars are going to have to be diverted somewhere. And my concern is that a lot of them are maybe business owners, maybe not. And part of this is going to have to include more, your offices are all over the place now with details and everything else, but it's going to have to include enforcement because where are these 26 cars going?
Yeah, it certainly does. If you look at the master plan and the evaluation of parking in the center itself, they have declared that we have plenty of parking, that we have to educate, we might have to update signs, make more directional for people, and certainly, you know, we still have the access of the Wall Street Lot at two-hour advantage, plus all the other lots that are currently shared. But certainly, I think, you know, the business owners would be our focus, talking with the chamber, to get the business owners to actually park in the lot on Wall Street and let the customers actually park within close proximity to their, to their shops. Because I do see, and I do see some business owners parked there, and I do see, you know, some cars that are there for a long duration of time, every, every day. So I agree with you. It's going to take an effort, but everything, everything we do down there is going to take an effort. And that's why we really want to go door-to-door when we start the pilot. We really think that the communication is something that we should improve on, that we rely on the chamber, and they do a great job, but some people don't belong to the chamber that still, you know, still own a business. So we want to go door-to-door, as well as utilize the chamber, as well as utilizing the blog, you know, even maybe putting some sign boards out. So the communication, we really want to be ramped up on this pilot.
And also on Hagman today, I saw three, you know, pretty good-sized trucks with deliveries. I'm assuming those deliveries now could be diverted to Woodside, but a truck that size could block Woodside for a delivery. Have we talked about deliveries and as far as trash pickup also?
Sure, that's what, myself and Director Calhoun target. If you know, we're making a closing down by Samuels there, at Jefferson Street extension, and maybe making, we're still in conversation about this, is making where French Square is a truck loading zone and unloading zone. So right now, instead of them double parking, where the cars, they're parking on the, on the double side of the car, then we'll have a specific spot to direct them to. So we're still working on that. We agree with you. The trucks need to be, I know Thursday's is a big delivery day for, for the sweats, and I know, you know, certainly, Paul Surtel, myself, I've known each other for a long time, and we communicated with him during the National Grid project. We got all his trucks in, so it's certainly a concern. Deliveries will be a top priority. The good news is some of the bigger trucks, such as the Pizza Center truck, usually doesn't deliver until 3:30 or 4:00, and our construction vehicles will be gone, so that'll help.
I'm talking more on the deliveries on Hagman right now. More to the automotive places that, you know, have pretty good-sized box trucks that come in with.
Yeah, they're not going to have access, so they're going to, the deliveries are going to have to be wheeled in from Pauline Street. Yeah, I'm not going to park on French Square to deliver to A1. I'm going to park over by A1. And we'll talk to those certainly auto body places, and they're going to have to inform their drive, delivery drivers to drop off in Woodside for collision. A1's going to have to take their deliveries either on Putnam. They do have access on Putnam to A1 collision, so it's not going to be, I don't even know why they should be taking their deliveries on that side anyway, to be honest with you.
And trash pickup?
Trash pickup, I'll let Steve Callen talk to trash.
There's certainly things that the pilot program is going to kind of shake out, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I have all those answers. There is private, private hauls for those auto bodies. It's not, it's not the capital waste contract that is the town contract. There will be a common drive. Those trucks often back down anyways, so they potentially could be backing down that common drive to get to those, those, those todes, which are on whales. And you'll see them oftentimes whaling, you know, whaling those todes out to the truck. So we're going to work with them, we're going to see if that, if that common drive turns out that we have to widen it a foot or two to make it more maneuverable for these trucks. But these are the things that we will, that we're looking to find answers.
Counsel, Bayazan.
I didn't know, do you plan on looking at that, the effect of the traffic on, on Putnam going towards Buchanan, because that's a concern I would have, because where Buchanan and Fremont connect is kind of a blind spot where people coming out of Fremont don't really get a good visual of the people coming up Buchanan, and that's used a lot as a cut through to Winthrop Street, and they're going a pretty good rate, and I just want you to take a look at that.
We'll, we'll certainly take traffic counts prior to the pilot and then traffic counts during the pilot. So we'll have time of day, vehicle or truckload traveling and seeing how it changes. We can see it visually with our eyes by going down and sitting there, but we also want the backup of data to report back accurate stuff. And we'll ask members of T-SAC to make visual observations, which John Ead is great at doing. He'll go down and spend a couple hours on three or four days a week and report back to T-SAC. So it's one of the great benefits of having a citizen that has an engineering background and a building and inspectional services background on our committee.
Counsel.
Counsel, Calhoun?
On that question about Fremont Street, is that currently a two-way right now?
Fremont on?
So seeing cars pass both ways, from Jefferson to Buchanan.
On the lot side, yes. Jefferson to Buchanan.
Buchanan.
So that's currently already?
Parking still only on.
On that street is.
They do it on both sides. It'd be great to reinforce that.
Yeah, I mean, so that's not included in the traffic pattern that's being set up?
Since 19, in 1994, there's been parking on both sides on Fremont.
Right, okay, so Fremont Street's really not directly affected by that?
No.
Okay.
Really, it's, it's the footprints inside CVS to Pleasant Street and over to Putnam.
Thank you.
Counsel, Verone?
Just in terms of voting this, this evening versus sending it out, which I don't mind voting it this evening, but do we want to give the opportunity for people to weigh in and have their opinions heard before we vote this? Well, honestly, I think, you know, the pilot's very important. I think, again, we've had literally hundreds of hours of input from folks. Time is of the essence. The state has made a commitment to us. We have a plan, we have a master plan, we have EDAC who's been part of this from the beginning. I think it's time, at least at this point in time, to consider the pilot program and some of the other motions that are going to be coming before us. Each one of us has spent hours upon hours debating and discussing through the chamber, through the EDAC, through the subcommittee meetings, economic development, through meetings with the chief, with DPW, the town manager. I mean, literally, this has been going on since 2014. And excuse the pun, but the rubber needs to hit them right, you know, as soon as possible. So I'd like to see this move and make a commitment that's been made to us by the state.
And it's clearly, you know, it's been communicated to us from all of these groups and all of these organizations that they want to see the center changed and revitalized, and if we don't stop.
I, I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just saying now, now it's under C A T. People can see it.
Right, right.
There might be more people interested, and we could still get it done by August 15th.
Counsel, Bayazan?
So I, I agree with Counsel Verone, but could we do it with, since this is a pilot and we're looking at the traffic patterns, could we institute the pilot and still ask for public feedback, especially while we've changed the patents? That might be more applicable to get it while we've changed it, to see what the citizens and businesses.
Absolutely. Public input is still vitally important.
And that's, that's the whole point of the pilot, is to receive their input.
So I agree with you, Counsel.
Just, really, after the pilot project period is over, how much will we be able to change in, after we hear the feedback from the public or after we do the studies and data? Are we able to change any of it, some of it, or what would be?
Town manager? I think what we're hoping here, and again, what we're proposing tonight has been a thoughtful consideration and sort of brings us to this point with a lot of support and public processes, as Council President articulated. So unless we hear a substantive problem, I think the minor issues we can deal with at first. But if, if we find out in this pilot that something just doesn't work, we will have to consider that and go back and reconsider what we're proposing. Our hope is that we don't. And I think we've given a lot of thought to how to lay out what works and what is, seems to be from an engineering standpoint, as well as, you know, just basic public safety, what seems to make sense. Getting input from some business owners already and getting input from, you know, those that have taken an interest in this, this is what begets the project, is to finalize, as Steve Callen said, you know, a surface plan, to finalize how the traffic mobility will move through. Certainly, T-SAC is our, you know, advising group on this. If they come back and say, you know, we looked, we observed, and we say there are some issues, then obviously, we have to reconsider, you know, what we're proposing.
And just certainly, I think, you know, Hagman Road is our drainage points, as Director Callen said. Opening a clo, you know, Hagman Road has to be closed. Whether or not we let them turn up Botlet, whether or not we have to reverse the one way again, those are issues I think that we can, you know, work through and change. You know, do we, you know, send them in one direction off of Putnam instead of both directions off of Putnam? All those are still on the table, but if we're going to meet these deadlines and we're going to keep that $2.38 million, Hagman Road is that drainage point in the project that has been engineered that way. So that's certainly, I think, a bigger issue that we probably can't do much maneuvering with.
I'm 100% in favor of this pilot program. I think Adams Street should have been changed two years ago, especially when we were doing the construction of Pleasant Street, because we were getting a real log gym there at that time. Would this, because of the money situation, would this be considered an emergency to get this pilot program voted tonight? Because as you know, the charter, you know, you'd have to declare it and ask for it as an emergency?
I don't think it falls within the definitions in the charter, quite honestly. I have to say, that's why we're looking for council to suspend these rules and take that under consideration. So if you read the section in the charter, it's very prescriptive about what consistent emergency.
An emergency, I understand that. And that's the charter, not the rules, so we really can't change the charter.
That's right. So, well said. So I think we're referring to your rules tonight to ask for expedited vote. Counsel, it's here.
Earlier in this discussion, it was stated that the pilot program was September 1st to November 1st, so that's, what is the timeframe now?
Sorry, I'm confused to point to.
No, I think we're still targeting for September 1st to November 1st. The point is to get the approval so we can make notification to all the neighbors, we can get our traffic meters rolled out and contracted with. You know, we certainly want to reach out to everyone on Adams Street that came to the T-SAC meeting. We want to reach out to every single business down there and every single resident that's in the impact zone. So it's that communication of this. We couldn't do those meetings and those informational stuff until we have the approval and the blessing of the council.
But my, my understanding is we have to go out to bid. We have to have the plans finalized by early September.
The plans are going to continue, counsel. We're going to, we're going to continue, the design has to continue while we're going through this, this, this traffic study. We're hoping with a lot of, you know, our eyes and us, you know, trying to design this and, and change these patterns, and we have a high confidence level that things are going to work. There will be some, some changes and some disciplines to, you know, to change, but we're hoping that we're proving that this pattern will work and that we get your endorsement at the end of it and we proceed with, with the bidding and the, and the award. If we wait until we do this traffic plan and then start that process, we're not awarding this project until sometime next spring.
So motion to suspend the rules and continue with.
Mr. President? Yeah, one more question than Counsel, if you could.
Well, I just wanted to let that make us point to that.
Yeah.
With, there is opportunity with this pilot program to have some of the data come in while we're still preparing the plans and getting plans out to bid. If there's data that shows that there needs to be significant changes, we can do it as an addendum and sort of bring out the bids, so that data can get collected. If it's progressing along, it looks like it's going to work, then we should be able to maintain the bid schedule that we're talking about.
Counsel, it's here. Was there anything else?
I just want, so if we do come to vote to this tonight, is it clarification on everybody that we are voting on a pilot, a pilot program from September 1st that would start September 1st and not before and go through November 1st?
Yes, that is correct. We get a lot of work to do before and so.
And I think the design, or the final stages kind of goes down two barrels. The infrastructure work, which is actually really critical, isn't going to change no matter what happens on your streetscape, pretty much. You might have some grading modifications. They can almost be, yeah, they may, you know, almost be made in the field if you need to, but, or RFI stage or, or something like that. So getting the tra, getting that path program is critical, but it's not going, it shouldn't impact the hardcore design of the stuff underground. That's, which is, the stuff up top is, I yelled that by a landscape architect one time, is decorating. You can play with that, you know, when you, when you get out there towards the end.
We use the analogy cake and icing, okay? But the cake is going to be the cake, and that's what we're, that's 90% desired. The icing, well, we'll see.
And any questions that are going to come up, I'd rather have them come up early on than later in the, in the process. At least we can address them, you know, intelligently, knowing what circumstances may or may not be there. And I guarantee there's going to be some inconveniences going to, now, this is, when you change, we're all creatures of habit, so when you change a traffic pattern or walking pattern or anything else along those lines, there's going to be some, some changes that need to be made, you know, at every location, every address, business and residential. But, you know, again, you know, we've got two projects going in the center now that are relying on the center being developed, and they're very exciting. In order for us to continue with that process and the things we've been working on and planning on for the last four years, we need to make a commitment that needs to be made sooner than later.
Counsel Verone, did you have something?
I was just going to motion that we suspend the, the rules and continue with this vote and vote it this evening.
All right, there's been a motion made. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Bayazan. Any, any discussion? Counsel, it's here.
I'm, I'm not going to vote for this tonight. I just think that we owe it to the, the businesses and residents to come. If we're not starting this till September 1st, I don't see why we can't let people see this meeting tonight and come to the 15th and with questions and concerns. I'm not going to use my council privilege to put it off because I feel it's probably going to be voted anyway, but I just wanted to voice my concerns about it right now.
Thank you, Counsel, it's here. Counsel Delbento, did you have something?
I was looking, I thought I had, did we have the motion email to us or draft of it?
I believe we do. You can just carry it with me or if someone finds it anywhere.
Denise sent it at 5:53.
Was it on 3.9 or was it on? So this is a, this is a motion because we didn't presume of a suspension of the rules. We're asking from the bench, if you will, a, a motion made by council to initiate a pilot according to the presentation tonight.
Starting on September 1st and?
And continuing through?
December, November 3rd?
November 1st.
November 1st, okay. Okay, so the motion, yes, Counsel.
I just wanted to ask, if we, if we didn't vote on it till the 15th, would that still give you enough time to do the education for people? Or is it, or is it, is it make it very difficult? I just want to know for most.
It's going to make it difficult for us to go open and knock every door, every business. And that's the delivery we want to make. We want to make sure they're educated, we want to make sure they know their impacts, and that we're trying without outreach, so.
And you'll get feedback during that process as well.
Are we going to get yelled at and thrown off their property too? But that's all part of the process.
In my opinion, we're three, three months late on this traffic study. And what's confusing me a little bit is early on, three months ago, we were being asked by the council to get this traffic study implemented. So, you know, we're asking to do it. I think it's the time.
Motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion because it has to be made by somebody.
Well, a motion to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend the rules. Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no. I'll make the motion that to implement the pilot program according to whatever Jim said.
I get it.
Pilot program, pilot program starting September 1st, going to November 1st, in the Center Business District. in the Center Business District.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we, I'm just asking, do we need to put anything in there about, it's all, it is predicated, you said, on national grade finishing by October, I mean, August 31st? Do we have to put anything in the motion to accommodate for that in case it isn't?
I don't believe so. You know, they're winding down their tie-ins. If they, if they have, they might have one or two houses to go back to, but they're going to. My report today by Lieutenant, they're going to be done by the 31st.
Okay. Our motion's been made. Any other discussion? One second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One, oh, one no. Motion carries, thank you.
I would also ask the council, under its privilege, to refer to the Finance Subcommittee, the Bonding Authorization Motion as written.
Motion to, the Finance Bonding Authorization as written by Town Manager.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Several of those items need to be advertised.
Yes.
Can we get those advertised?
Right, I did not discuss the four other motions that I proposed tonight. And they can be referred out under, new business, if you prefer. We are adding them in on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
But yes, they'll also have to be advertised as well, yeah.
All right. Old business, we're moving on to that, Town Manager, you're all set?
No, I, I have a few things to bring up to the attention of the council. Obviously, we're all very heartbroken over the death of Nancy Williams.
Please, drop it, please.
From the, from the perspective of those who worked with her, she was a dear colleague and, and good friend. She always came to my office with a cartoon, or a humor, or a joke, or something, and lifted my spirits every time I saw her. So she will be deeply, deeply missed. And to that effect, we're going to have a skeleton crew in the town hall and all town buildings tomorrow to enable people who wish to go and celebrate Nancy's life, according to what's been advertised. So that's, it's a heavy heart, we lost a good friend. As mentioned, it was a great event to have the Governor winter and to have the Speaker and Jay Ash come and celebrate with us. It was a terrific event. Thank you all, those who came, and those who did not, you missed a good one. Because it was, it was, it was, it was great. I'd like to now talk about something that has been on our minds for the past few months, and that's the matter of consideration of the town to inculcate the, the program that we have developed with the assistance of the chief and as many people in this room have participated. And that's, that's really taking on as a town operation, the function of our peer recovery coaches. And that would require a recommendation from me to the council of a reconsideration of structure under the charter for a departmental reorganization. And I will plan to submit to the council on August 15th a proposal for that. We didn't want to take that up tonight, because it's a fairly comprehensive issue. I thank the leadership of Linda Cowal and the Public Safety Subcommittee for leading the analysis and due diligence on this issue over the past few months. I have to say that we learned a lot over the past few months. And I come to you, and will be coming, with a recommendation of a restructuring of department, the Health Department, to incorporate this as a major mission change in that department and with it administrative needs that need to be met. But as you, as I point to this, you know, today, just today, it was reported that there were over 56,000 deaths across the country due to this opioid crisis. In Massachusetts, there were 1,900 or so deaths this past year. And it's growing. It's not receding, it's getting worse. I think the Governor said it well, that they've analyzed the problem and know that, you know, it mostly came out of a free-for-all of issuance of prescription, prescriptions in medical industry for, for folks who suffer from ailments and then, then get addicted as a consequence. And so, but, but that's one element of this whole process. The second issue for us was to see, to understand Winter. You know, we have had recent experience, as been mentioned, in developing and deploying, thanks to the creativity of the chief and Deanna Ferretra and Meredith Hurley, who really took this on as a principal issue, and sought funding as well as creative design of a program to, to work with Winter. You know, Winter, for better or worse, has some geographical challenges and also has some, you know, needs with respect to understanding the complexities of public health issues. We have opened up great dialogue with our neighbors in Riviera and Chelsea and in Boston, but still, Winter has its own challenges and unique to the community. And so we always have to respect that and understand how that impacts us and how we can really be successful in meeting the needs of our residents. I think that the proof is, is well studied, and the data shows that Winter, what Winter is doing is worth doing and continuing to do. The concerns that we had were, A, should this become a town operation? Because essentially, this is an innovative, unique, and different proposition for a municipality. Most municipalities are not doing what Winter is doing, although they're paying attention to Winter. And they're, they're wanting to understand what, why Winter is being so successful in dealing with this issue thus far. But the concern we had was to make sure that we weren't going to be exposed to additional liability as well as that our insurance carrier would in fact be, would not be, find this important to what they insure. So we had to find out the answers to that, and the answer came back after some educating by me with them, that they find that what we propose will not increase our premiums nor will it increase our liability from, from their perspective. So that's good news for the town. But that was an essential hurdle that we had to overcome. We also discussed this matter with our town attorneys to understand what they thought about this and, and what we weren't seeing. We didn't want to have a legal blind spot, okay? We wanted to understand, because this is a unique issue. So they did some analysis and came back with some questions, and I believe that we've answered those questions satisfactorily enough to, to their, you know, their satisfaction, so that they endorse the proposal as well. And so that brought me to want to understand, well, okay, ask the question, what are resources available in the region? And how can, are we going to do something that's easily handled by somebody else? Because you, you know, frankly, never want to be a pioneer in, at least in, in this business. Because you stand to be scrutinized as well as, you know, the success or failure rate is, is more on the failure than success when it comes to municipalities taking on anything new. So I wanted to make sure that we could do this successfully and not see that we could have done it more economically or more practically and with more breadth of service with a regional approach. We brought in CAPPIC, and we had a great conversation with, with Barbara Pucci. Linda was there, the chief was there, Deanna Ferretra was there. And I think that there's a lot of synergy with CAPPIC. But I think that there was good respect for the division of, of work between what they can do and what we should continue to do. And so I think the complementary aspects of how we can work collaboratively were very apparent in that meeting. And I thank Linda and Barbara Pucci for, for, you know, advancing the conversation of, of how we're going to make that go forward. And so we will be utilizing regional resources, but we will also need to have our own effort on the ground locally as well. And so, you know, I was confident at the end of that meeting to know that our success is highly, you know, favorable in, in continuing to do what we're doing, especially while reaching out to others and gaining, you know, those relationships and leveraging those partnerships to, to enable us to have the sweet wraparound resources that need to be there. Because every case is unique and may need different things. And we may not have all those resources available, but with the partnership of CAPPIC and with others, I know we, thank you, Council Boyajin, for reaching out to Mass General, for example. We know that there's other opportunities as well to explore. So this is an emerging, evolving, and maturing kind of proposition, but it starts with starting. And, and we need to do that and, and get that, you know, in place. And so I will be proposing next week in a memo to the council to adopt and restructure the Health Department under the leadership of Deanna Ferretra to become an independent agency and a director in, in her status, as well as bringing the peer recovery coaches on as, as town employees. So that's my report verbally to you tonight, and I plan to endorse that in, in letter form to you this week.
Thank you so much.
No, I think that's terrific. Question, would, would, I think this is such an important topic, would it be worthwhile to not only do that recommendation, but maybe do, I don't know, something at the senior center where you break down and get everyone together so that we can talk about it as a community of how we're going to approach it, so that it's not just at the council meeting, but we have, you know, I think, working with, you know, maybe we could do that in the coming weeks too, because I think that would be a really good idea to clarify how we're going to do this.
That's a great idea.
More like a workshop.
Yeah, something so that we could get the public in here and everyone else could be here.
Yeah, certainly, and, you know, today, Maxelle and Deanna met with the contract social worker that will be coming on board next week. She'll be spending some time with the police department and with Chip and Danielle, so that's another resource that we're bringing into the Health Department. That'll be managed by Deanna. But certainly, as I just said to them on Friday, we get 3 to 100 apprehensions, which is bring the body before the court for drug or alcohol substance abuse problem. And then we had suicide attempt on, over in the May area. I won't get into the details of that, but certainly there's mental health issues and needs, and we're glad to add that as, under the direction of the Town Manager and the grant to Department of Public Health. And they'll give them more resources, they'll give the police more resources. Some issues do overlap and some issues don't. There's no drug and alcohol substance abuse problem, but there is a mental health issue, and we want certainly to address that, so thank you.
Thank you. Council Boyajin?
As you know, I'm a big supporter of the program, but one, a couple of constituents had brought up, is there some way you could mention how with this reorganization that the other parts of the Health Department aren't going to suffer as far, do you know what I mean?
That's a good point.
That was another thing I know people were concerned about.
And, you know, as you've played a role, counselor, in observing health issues generally in your tenure, you know where we came from.
Yes.
Where we started, which was frankly, a bad place. Limited in terms of, of health understanding as well as capacity within the town. But through the, I think, the changes in the Board of Health, through, you know, leadership on that, on that board, Councilor Engman played a big role on that board. And, and I proposed a consolidation of some services, particularly inspection of restaurants, the sanitation inspections, the housing inspections, all those things, under the rubric of the Commissioner of Inspection Services. That's gone very well. And thankfully, you know, it's not something that's done sort of out in, in some orbit. It's all done collectively and collaboratively within that department. And that, I think, has, you know, has shown to be a very successful outcome. But it didn't address necessarily some of the evolving health issues that we've now come to appreciate. We had a study, a health needs study of the town, and clearly, there's a lot to, more to consider. And it's not, doesn't fall neatly under an inspectional service, for example. It really requires us to have an independent agency that oversees public health and public health needs as they evolve outside of those typical inspectional issues. And so now we're growing that capacity within the town to understand those issues and to be more of an outreach organization and service organization for those issues. And so that's what brought us to more recognizing that the public health nurse role, for example, has really, you know, that won't go away, that will still need to be addressed. But there are so many other issues that need to come into play that are complementary to that, that have to get addressed. And, and it just shows, I think, that the ti- the town is emerging in a good, productive way to understand what public health really means. You know, it's essential of the three essential issues this town, any town needs to face is public safety, public education, and public health. Those are the three legs of the stool. And yet, in this town, public health was perhaps the weakest element of the town. But now we've done a lot, I think, to your credits, over time, and to the town's employees to recognize the need to really fully invest in this aspect of, of town services. And so that's really where, where we're going.
Anyone else in the council? And I just want to say thank you to Town Manager and to all the folks in the Health Department and the council, you know, and the chief for starting this whole program, along with the Town Manager. It's been a long road, but a lot of successes along the way and a lot more to come. And I think that so, it keeps families so much together and so important. Hear about so many people losing folks and young folks, and it just shouldn't happen. So thank you for all your hard work, chief, Town Manager, Health Department, and the council for support. The council, all, all you folks who helped out and support, thank you.
Moving on then. We, we have a number of small projects that we're doing that we're looking for some assistance, and I know you have some motions in the packet for particularly the police stairs in front of the Police Department. Those need to be addressed immediately, so we're acting, we're actually asking, sorry?
Is that an emergency?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say so. Who did that one?
So I'd ask for action on that. You'll see also a number of other items under new business for funding for particular items that, you know, we need to work on. The roof on the senior center is an issue with the air handling systems and the leaking from them, right? That's affecting now the, the bathrooms badly in, in the center. So that's also an emergency action for funding that we're looking at. I just, as I said this earlier, thank you, MWRA. They took exigent action on our request to utilize our full amount of available funds for our infrastructure improvements. They didn't have to do that, but they, they understood that we had three strong projects in the, in the pipeline, knowing that we needed that funding to greatly advance our infrastructure improvements, both in the center, Contract 5, as well as on Shore.
Green button.
As well as on Shore Drive. And so they, they authorized, and you have correspondence, they authorized us to utilize those funds. I am proposing motions that need to be referred to finance tonight, consistent with, with that funding availability. It was mentioned that the demo permit will be pulled by Del Brook on the center. That's great news. We also know that Mr. Ferretra filing his plans with the planning board, and they'll be reviewed. So you'll start to see, you know, good things now happening from the consequence of all this effort, real live projects starting, okay? So that's, that's really good news. I will be attending a dredging study meeting in Beverly next week. There's conversation about developing a, a source of funds at the state level for doing dredging. And certainly, Winter needs to be there and be in, in the front end of that line to get dredging assistance for the town. So I'm going to go to that meeting next, next week. I just want to acknowledge the Police Department for its good work and investigation work this past week with the results of, you know, doing a very important job with, and the apprehension of a, of a situation. So I really acknowledge the collaborative effort that they've made over the past several months on that issue. I believe you all received an email to that extent. And I just want to acknowledge the Speaker and the Governor again for a number of items that were funded in the state budget that are very important to Winter. And they survived, and Senator Boncorry had a particular influence in, in a couple of those matters too. So that's great that we're able to see that funding sustained, child safety grants, some schools. school grants, as well as a grant to CASA, all good things. And so we appreciate, even in tight fiscal times, that we were able to retain that funding. And you received a weekly report. There are a number of items in it I don't have to go over. If you have any questions, you can let me know. That's my report.
Just ask a question about the state budget. Was any of the funding headed towards Winterford subject to any vetoes?
No, those were sustained. Those fundings were.
None of them that are taken up in September are going to be?
I understand that those aspects of the budget were reconciled, so, you know, I don't believe that they will be vetoes.
Anything else from the council? That being said, we'll go to old business. Senate Business District Overnight Residential Parking, which is a combination of TSAC, Transportation, and EDCAC, as well as a planning board. I believe we have not received anything, that's continued, so we'll wait to hear on that. Second item under old business, Winterford Community Center Advisory Committee. I will be, I'm not going to make those appointments this evening, I'll be making them at our next meeting on the fifteenth. We did receive some applicants. I just need to sit with Denise and just make sure everything's in place. I'll make those recommendations to the council on the fifteenth. Winterford School Site Rezoning Recommendation, Economics Development Citizens Advisory Committee. That's scheduled to go before the planning board on the twenty-eighth for recommendation from the planning board. So that should be, or will be continued. Next, under new business, we've got a number of transfers, which we'll be referring to finance, if I'm not incorrect.
Yes. They, someone wants to read them.
I have them here. Looks like they're out of order from the list, but I'll go through them. Actually, on the first one, I'm going to make the motion on, which would be move this Town Council vote to transfer nine thousand from Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund to fund, to a new general fund special article for required safety repairs to the front stairs of the police station, take any other action relative thereto, and I'd like to make that as an emergency motion.
I would accept that as an emergency motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
That will require six votes, though.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have a roll call from Town Board. Thank you.
Council Ringman?
Yes.
Council Calla?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council LaTieri?
Yes.
Council Boyajin?
Yes.
Council Verone?
Yes.
Council Dobento?
Yep.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Sanford?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, if I can find it. We'll do the emergencies first.
Yeah.
Move the Town Council vote to transfer twenty-seven thousand five hundred from Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund to a new general fund special article for the purchase installation of a new handle for the Council on Aging, or take any other action thereto. I'd like to make that as an emergency motion, and I think, I believe we don't have to advertise it if we do that.
I'd accept it as an emergency motion. Do I have a second?
No, it's an emergency.
That was made by Council Calla.
We have to answer, twenty-five thousand?
No, it's an emergency motion.
Emergency motion, emergency.
So can we have a roll call, please?
Council Ringman?
Yes.
Council Calla?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council LaTieri?
Yes.
Council Boyajin?
Yes.
Council Verone?
Yes.
Council Dobento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Sanford?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, those two emergency motions.
I think we'll do a third one also.
Yeah.
The generator. I move the Town Council vote to transfer fifty-two thousand five hundred from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund to a new general fund special article for the purchase and installation of a new emergency generator for the police station, or take any other action thereto. I'd like to make that as an emergency motion as we found the last power outage. The current generator is failing severely and is not bearable.
I'll accept that as an emergency motion. We have a second, second by Council LaTieri. All in favor? In fact, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Council Ringman?
Yes.
Council Calla?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council LaTieri?
Yes.
Council Boyajin?
Yes.
Council Verone?
Yes.
Council Dobento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Sanford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council Dobento. I'd make a motion to the Town Council vote to transfer thirty-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars from Town Council Reserve to the Urban Agenda Grant to fund the shut fall, the grant, or take any other action thereto.
Motion to refer to finance.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries.
I've got a motion that move that the Town Council vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the Town Council Reserve to replenish the general fund special article FY fourteen derelict properties for maintenance of derelict properties, or take any other action thereto.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Vice President. Boncorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. A motion that the Town Council vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the Town Council Reserve to the Green Communities Grant to fund its shortage, and the grant as a result of lower than expected utility rebates from energy efficiency projects, will take any other action thereto.
Motion to refer to finance.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries for finance. I think that's all the money was.
Did you do the pest control?
No, you need the pest control.
Three thousand.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
You have that, councilor? Do we, which order is in, I'm just scrolling through them.
It's three thousand dollars for pest control to replenish the funds, so we can continue the pest. I don't think it's in the past.
Yeah, I'm not seeing.
I don't see it.
I don't see, I don't see the exact.
You have the motion?
Well, how's this motion?
You're just picking it out of the sky, councilor, or you have it right?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to refer the request to transfer three thousand dollars for pest replenishment to the Finance Committee.
Second. Motion has been made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, councilor. Appreciate it. So we have these, so it's now the. All right, we're going to open up for public comment. I'm sorry, we still have, oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
We have a series of motions.
Yeah.
I'm going to just read the title, refer them to Finance Committee.
Yes.
Just going to see where I can pick it. Move the Town Council appropriate the sum of one hundred eighty-four thousand for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement of the water main street and sidewalk improvements, the service connections, the Hightown, Central, South Main, Taylor, Winterford Streets from Main to Fort Banks, including all costs incidental related thereto. Let's wave the rest of the reading and refer to finance.
Motion to refer. Motion made, second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Move that the Town Council appropriate the sum eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement of the water street and sidewalk improvements, the service connections, the Hightown, Central, South Main, Taylor, Winterford from Main to Fort Banks, including all costs incidental related thereto. The Town Manager is authorized to borrow eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in issued bonds under the Town Chapter Fifty-Four, Mass General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize to borrow all proportion of such money from MWR, Mass Resources Authority.
Motion made. Made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion that the Town Council appropriate the sum of one million dollars for the purpose of financing engineering design replacement of the water main street and sidewalk approved and service connections to Winterford Drive, including all costs incidental related thereto that meet, that to meet this appropriation of the treasurer with the approval, the Town Manager is authorized to borrow one million dollars in issued bonds, regardless of the Town of Winterford under Chapter Fifty-Four of the Mass General Laws, or any other enabling authority. Is authorized to borrow all or such a portion of the money for the Mass Water Resources Authority.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Seconded. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion for finance that the Town Council appropriate the sum of two million two hundred forty-four thousand for the purpose of financing engineering design replacement of the water main, street, and sidewalk improvements, and surface connections for the Winterford Center project, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that appropriation of the treasurer with the approval, the Town Manager is authorized to borrow two million two hundred forty-four thousand dollars in issued bonds and notes of the Town in the Chapter Fifty-Four of General Laws. The Town Manager with the approval, the treasurer with the approval, the Town Manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money from the Mass Water Resources Authority.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And refer to the Finance Committee that the Town Council appropriate the sum of three million nine hundred twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement of water main street and sidewalk improvements, and service connections for the Winterford Center District project, including all incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation of the treasurer with the approval, the Town Manager is authorized to borrow three million nine hundred twenty thousand dollars in issued bonds and notes of the Town of Winterford, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven, Three A of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority.
The motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A question on one of those motions, Steve, was, what with the Shore Drive, have we found any information about the curbing if we're going to be a reason?
Yes, so I spoke to the, I had a conversation with the contractor last week. They agreed to commit one thousand, any a feat of curbing to back to the town, which was a big give on their part, because that is money that they would have gotten as profit as a whole.
Yep.
It's just good faith they're trying to do all by themselves. They'll load us, we do have to truck it out of there, but they will load it, and the plan is to redeploy.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Want a quick question?
Yes, Council Ringman?
Could we get this presentation posted on the website?
Yes, we can.
This was a great presentation, thank you for putting together such a comprehensive package of information.
Absolutely.
One second for the Town Manager.
I'm sorry? I just have something for the.
Sure, absolutely.
I referred under public comment to an email I got about 127 Boden Street, their inability to access the driveway. I was wondering if you could, there was a sign that was there, said no parking here to corner. Can you, it was taken down, can you refer that to TSAC for some recommendation?
Anything else in the council? If not, public comment?
Yes.
Hi, Diana Wallace, Dr. of the Library. We're having a concert out here in the front lawn on August fifteenth. I think you'll be having a meeting, but join us afterwards, make it a quick one. Six-thirty to seven-thirty, sponsored by the Friends of the Library. We're very fortunate, the Friends sponsor a lot of programs that we have, and we'd like to have a nice turnout for this brief jazz concert number one.
Okay, thank you.
You finished your listen a half hour.
Yeah, can we move the meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Chief?
Just wanted to point out, you know, and thank the manager and the council for their support, continued support for the peer coach program, but there's a, you know, I oftentimes am lucky to be at the base of the program and speak in national forums about the program, but the reason I love this program so much is because it's really a team effort. Everyone contributes, everybody contributes. The peer coaches contribute, CASA, Deanna contribute, so many other people. Linda is, you know, basically the founding fathers of peer recovery and support in Winterford, and we kind of took her idea and formalized it and developed it. So there's a lot of people to thank, but we all thank the manager and the council for their continued support, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chief, for all your hard work, also. Mike Lucero?
So, Mike Lucero, I just had one comment. The motion that's been referred to the planning board about zoning for the middle school site suggests that the middle school site be put into the CBD zoning, and I just wanted that call to the council's attention that out of the EDCAC, we recommended a smart growth district, and the financial bonuses that go along with that go from what is, they are based upon what that's basically zoned at when you establish the district. Okay, so if we put it temporarily in CBD zoning, we're basically throwing away about a million dollars' worth of subsidies if we decide later on to go with a smart growth district. So it's best to keep it as rezé and then smart growth. I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. I don't want a small administrative error to cost the town a million dollars, so.
You'll be at that planning board meeting?
Yeah, I just think it should be looked at.
Okay.
I got a statement from him, send it to the planning.
Okay, please, yeah, okay. Thank you, Michael. That's E. Shane?
That's E. Shane, Winterford Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to make sure that as we move forward, Terry, I think particularly with you, and I think also with Jim, with your office, that we are really clear about the communication. I think it's good that we have as much time as we have, knowing the people that I work with, some members, some not, just being in CBD, everybody takes information and listens or hears differently, and it's going to take some time to get some of those things done. And then I think there's also some conversations that we can help with. Jim, you were talking about a couple of the trucks that are down in Haguenrod, and, you know, whether they can back into that part that's available to do drop offs or something. But to work together, because we do have businesses on Haguen that are affected, but also just the whole area, completely, resident and businesses. So that we're all giving exactly the same message, and it just becomes the mantra. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Just closing, anything else? Yes. Can I ask the clerk to close the finance meeting, six o'clock on Tuesday, the fifteenth?
Fifteenth. Yep. We're going to disrupt the jazz concert.
I'd rather be at the jazz concert last night, but.
No, they all to be advertised?
Those five items need to be advertised, but also the smaller ones that were on there, the three thousand.
Twenty-seven-five, has to be.
Yeah, the ones we didn't, the ones that weren't emergency motions.
Right, they were over twenty-five.
Everything twenty-five, the more.
Yeah. Anything else, public comment? Anything else in the council?
Every public comment possible.
Yes.
Hello, hello, everybody. I'm Leander Zioni with CASA. We've all thanked a million times over, so I won't get into it, and thank you very much. But I wanted to just make a quick announcement about September. So I know Linda had started before I arrived, that September's Recovery Month, so the team here, as well as a bunch of others that aren't here, are kind of spearheading a variety of different initiatives throughout the month, celebrating recovery and remembering, you know, the hope for people to find recovery. So I know Linda had mentioned that the Fed Up Rally will kick off the month in August thirty-first, and then on September ninth, we're actually hosting a sober basketball tournament down basketball field, basketball field, basketball courts. It's a tournament for people in recovery to celebrate their recovery, so that's going to be a kind of a day-long basketball tournament. And then Chip and Danielle are hosting an event that evening for individuals to celebrate their recovery, which will be at the Senior Center. And then at the end of the month, on October second, we're actually going to be having an award ceremony honoring various people in the community that have helped CASA and the community at large fight stigma and promote the work that we do. So you'll be getting more information from me on the particulars of those things, but I just wanted to take a moment and let you guys know that those are upcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Anything else?
I just don't know if everybody knows that Nancy Williams is our, was our president of CASA, and we miss her terribly, and it's a big loss to us, but while you're going through all your planning and hoping, and, you know, for us to have our programs to continue and the recovery coaches, that's something Nancy was very proud of. She was very open about talking about the decision in her family, as I was. We were never ashamed to talk about it, to say that we all have issues in our family, you know, it's a no stigma zone, and I think as you're going on, please think of her, how important this whole program is, and to continue the fight to save lives, and to educate, and then we, you know, someday, hopefully, we're grateful we don't have this in our life, life, but it is a battle for everything, whether it's alcohol or drugs or emotional issues, but just think of Nancy and making all your decisions, and I think she'll be really proud to see that this could actually be a big part of the health profession. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to, on the prevention side of things, we're also doing some, a bunch of things for young people this summer, and two things coming up that you should know about is the chief has helped us put together some funds for a big event for the summer, and the youth have planned Winter Amazing Race, so if you're in high school, you can sign up with a team member, and you can do the amazing race, and then everyone high school enough is invited to our after-party at Ingleside Park with the free barbecue. We're setting up a big inflatable screen of video games, we're going to have a lot of win fights. And then on August eleventh, we've collaborated with the Winthrop Coalition, I'm sorry, the Rivier Coalition, through Rivier Cares, and we're having a drive-in movie. It's free to all high school students, you can register online, you can also walk in, there'll be place to sit. It's going to be at the parking lot of The Marshals in Rivier by Wonderland. Please visit our Facebook pages for details.
What was the date of the race?
Amazing Race is on this Saturday, and then the after-party is right after. Thanks for asking. All the info should be on Facebook, so hope to see you. Thank you.
Anything else, public relations, upcoming events? If not, we'll accept the motion.
Motion's been made, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
Opposed?